Should get fixed tomorrow.
Is it fixable or do you have to get a new one?
I hope it's fixable.
Welcome to our Kingsburg City Council and the planning commission workshop. The council came to the 100% capacity to the public. And it's Thursday, August 11th, 2023. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Item number two is public comment. Any person may directly address the council and the planning commission at this time on any item not on the agenda or on any item that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council and planning commission. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. And anybody that's here for public comment. Being none, I will close public comment. We will move on to item number three, the reason we are here tonight. Fresno County Multi Jurisdictional Housing Element Update Study Session. Presentation by project team facilitator by Fresno COG via Zoom.
Good evening, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. And can the person currently sharing stop sharing so the presentation can pop up, sorry about that? And while we're doing that, I'll go ahead and introduce myself, you know, as to not waste time. My name's Clancy Taylor. I am the technical assistance programs manager for CCRH, California Coalition for Rural Housing, and we're helping out with the outreach portion of the Fresno COG Multi Jurisdictional Housing Element. I'll go ahead and have Amy introduce herself.
Hi, thanks Clancy, my name is Amy Sinseimer. I am the project manager of the housing element update for the city and I work with placeworks.
Alright, thank you Amy, I'll go ahead and get this presentation started so we can get on with our evenings. Alright, so we all know the reason we are here. City of Kingsburg. Study session for the multi jurisdictional housing element. Tonight's presentation, we did introductions, bam, we're good to go. We'll go over a brief introduction to the housing element overview, what's in it, what's the timeline? Move into the RENA or the regional housing needs allocation. And then Amy is going to give us some updates on state housing law and get into that really fun technical stuff. So the project team is much more than Amy and I, this is a lot of folks coming together to do this. So the Fresno COG is leading the effort and bringing all these jurisdictions together. And then our consultant team is being led by placeworks and Jennifer Gaslim. Alright, so the meeting objective is to provide an overview of the housing element process and the new state laws. Share some information about the schedule and the regional documents. And then start gathering some initial input from you all about potential housing issues and opportunities, even though that's more of the purpose of our Tuesday workshop, which I'll promote at the end. Alright, brief housing element overview. So what is it? It's one of the eight mandated parts of the general plan. Must updated every eight years. So the adoption timeline, city of Kingsburg housing element is due December 31st, 2023. So we're starting about a year and a half early because as we'll see soon, it's a really iterative process and when working with state agencies like HCD, Housing and Community Development, it can take a while, so gotta get started now. And then last bit, the housing element helps plan for accommodating the jurisdictions fair share of the regional housing need and we'll show those numbers in a few. Alright, so the big portions of the housing element, it plans for the housing needs of everyone in the community of all economic segments. The big portions that the city gets involved with must have adequate zoning to meet all these housing needs. As part of a housing element, you may see some ordinance or zoning changes be required as part of this. It must also include goals and policies to ensure Kingsburg provides adequate housing support for all houses, for the entire community, including special needs households, which may be seniors, people with disabilities or other groups that may have difficulty accessing housing in our current market. What it does not do, does not require the city or the county to actually build those units. They have to lay the groundwork to make those units available, but they are not responsible for building. It does not provide funding for building units and it does not approve specific projects or developments. And what's in it, you know, how does it do all of these things, what are we looking at? So because this is a big multi jurisdictional effort, we're going to split it into regional sections, which will look the same across all jurisdictions. And then we'll get into local sections, which will be hyper context specific, tons of input from staff and residents to hopefully get a better picture of what's going on and what to do in the future. So regional sections, we are going to have your basic intro. We're going to get a countywide background, help understand what's the situation with the demographics, the housing characteristics and an analysis of the market. Then it gets into the new stuff, which Amy will touch on later of affirmatively furthering fair housing and what that means, what we got to do for it. And then moving into the counties' housing goals and policies and then summary of sites of where those housing units could potentially be built. Now, the local sections look strikingly similar with a few differences. You're still going to have that local housing needs assessment, you're still going to have a fair housing assessment. And everything here is just localized. So we're, you know, you go through things like a site analysis and inventory, helping understand what land is there, where can we potentially build these housing units? And then additionally, moving into things like constraints, you know, why haven't these potential RENA's been met in the past? And then it lastly moves into, you know, what are we going to implement? How are we going to actually carry this out over the next eight years? It's a big emphasis now with the housing elements. And then finish it off with an evaluation of the previous housing elements and evaluating, alright, how did the fifth house, fifth cycle go? Now moving on to the sixth cycle, where do we go from here? And so this slide is not my favorite slide on how to describe the housing element process. There's another slide right after this with actual dates, which makes sense for my brain. But if this works for you, that's fantastic. So after all this community outreach process, starting here, we'll do the community workshops as well as some other outreach opportunities. Then this brilliant and amazing consulting staff is going to prepare an administrative draft. Then they're going to give it back to the city and will release to the public, which the city, the public and whomever wants to can do their public comment on that. It's a period of 30, 40 days. And then we submit to the state and we wait. It does take on average about 90 days for the state to come back and say, this is what we found. These are the edits you need to make. And then continuing this process until HCD sends their compliance letter. You adopt the housing element here at the city and then HCD submits it for certification. So we get the shiny bright star by December 31st, 2023. So how I think about a lot of this is this next slide, because I have dates and I can put those on a calendar. So right now, we are in this first phase, which is outreach. Coming out, letting folks know what's going on, what's happening. So goal is beginning of next year, start drafting that housing element habit out. By February of next year, how reviewing the public draft and then coming back in the spring and doing more outreach. Saying, alright, this is, you know, this is what we've come up with this first time around. What does the public think of it, what does the city think of it? And then we're looking at late spring of next year, submitting it to HCD for first review. And then hopefully by late summer, we'll have a second review with HCD and then adoption hearings. And thankfully, this information, we will give it to you all. You don't have to memorize it right now, but that is our pathway to getting to adoption hearings in December of 2023. So I'm just going to stop there and pause if there's any questions right now about the information I went over. Excellent, so we're going to move on to the regional housing needs allocation. And what the RENA means. And so how is it determined, you know, how do we come up with this big, these big numbers of what we do? So at first, the state goes and says, as a state, we need two and a half million more units. They break it down and do it by the council of governments. So here in Fresno County, it's the Fresno COG. And then so the Fresno COG develops their methodology of how to, as equitably as possible, distribute it to the local jurisdiction. So the Fresno COG was tasked with 58,298 units. And then the local role in this is Kingsburg gets allocated fewer than that. So what are the numbers looking like? So for this next housing element cycle, Kingsburg's RENA allocation is 882 units. It's roughly 2% of all the units in the county. And it's roughly done by population, but Fresno COG's methodology can get a bit more complex than that. So 882 is the number you need to know here in Kingsburg. So density to accommodate all of these numbers. Cities and counties must show adequate land zone for housing to accommodate the RENA at each income level. And so here in Kingsburg, it is considered a suburban jurisdiction by the state and the base zoning required is 20 units per acre. And then, so how do, you know, how do we go about starting to select these units? What does that look like? So you start by looking at the sites that were identified last time and that perhaps may still aren't used for whatever reason. An emphasis on this cycle is with sites that are larger than a half acre but smaller than 10 acres. That's what's been identified as most beneficial for these types of developments that we're trying to build. Next is going to be looking at vacant and underutilized sites throughout the city. And then adding numbers for projected accessory dwelling units and then considering pipelines and projects. So all of these factors are taken in into how does the city meet that 882 unit need? And then I'm going to go ahead and pass it on to Amy, who's going to go over some key changes in the state law and how it matters to a housing element.
Great, thank you Clancy, next slide please. So the first two laws are very recent, they went into effect this year. The first one, Assembly Bill 2015, mostly affects the timing of housing element release and review. So it basically added time to the required state timeframes for the housing element. So when a public draft is ready on the housing element, it must be released for public review for at least 30 days before it can be submitted to the state for their review. And after that 30 days, any comments that have been received need to be considered and potentially revisions made to the draft. It also changed the timeframes for the state review period. So it used to be that the first review was 60 days long, it's now a 90 day review. And then all other reviews after that are 60 days. The deadline does not change, next slide please. So Assembly Bill 1398 applies to jurisdictions that need to rezone land in order to meet their RENA. So we haven't done that analysis yet for Kingsburg, but if that is the case, then what this law said is basically it's about when you get into compliance with your housing element. So if you can work with the state to get in compliance within 120 days of the due date. So the due date is December 31st of next year. And basically, a compliant housing element must be adopted by then or within 120 days of then. And that means the state has sent the city a letter that says, your housing element is completely in compliance. Then if there's rezoning required, the city would have three years to complete that rezoning effort. If the city does not meet that deadline, then there would only be one year to complete the rezoning. So it's a kind of a penalty law. Or a carrot, you know, it's a carrot and stick kind of thing with a lot of these laws. So we'll see that in other places, next slide please. So in 2017, there was a huge package of bills that passed related to housing in the state. Some of them were funding bills, some of them related to the housing element and other things. We're going to highlight a few of those. One of those was Assembly Bill 72, which basically established an enforcement department at the Department of Housing and Community Development. And this is also related to the Attorney General's office. And so there have been many laws over the years in place that require everyone to do their housing element and to plan for housing. But there is more power now at the state level to actually enforce these laws. So that can mean sending letters to get folks to get in compliance. And in, you know, really extreme cases, it can be lawsuits and legal action. The next one, Assembly Bill 1397, is a very housing element focused law. This focuses mostly on the analysis of sites. And as Clancy mentioned, there are different requirements this time, primarily focusing on sites that address the, what's called the lower income part of the RENA. So the numbers that are for extremely low, very low and low income households. And there's basically, it's just a higher bar to say that a site is suitable to address lower income housing in the housing element, in particular if that site is non vacant. And if that is a lower income site and you're looking at a site that's less than half an acre or larger than 10 acres, there's additional analysis and information about trends on sites of those sizes that's required. Next slide please. So Senate Bill 166 updated what's called the no let loss law or statute in the government code. And this is a requirement that all jurisdictions monitor their list of sites that's included in the housing element after housing element adoption. So once we get through this whole process, there will be, you know, your new updated adopted housing element and the list of sites that are available and suitable for housing development. And as those sites potentially develop with actual projects, they may or may not have the number of units or the type of housing that is assigned in the housing element. And, you know, we do our best to estimate what might happen on a site with a project there. But it's really ultimately up to the property owner and the applicant on a site, you know, what gets proposed. So it's the city's responsibility as we go through the whole planning period to track any developments that occur. And if they are not exactly what is listed in the housing element, then the city must continue to have enough sites available to meet the remaining regional housing need. So every year, a report is submitted to the state and that counts, you know, what permits have happened. And so then the numbers get drawn down over time based on the actual permits. But that remaining number, so the remainder there of the math needs to be tracked and monitored. And if the sites list is no longer sufficient at some point, then the city does need to look for additional land to continue to have enough sites for the RENA. Happy to answer questions on that one, it's a, there's a lot to that law. Senate Bill 35 is, has been around for five years or so also. And this one applies to actual projects that come forward. Most jurisdictions in the state are subject to this law, but this changes over time. It's based on how many units have been approved. As you move through your housing element planning period, if you haven't approved a certain number, which is again, most jurisdictions in the state are in this category, then certain affordable housing projects need to be permitted in a streamlined fashion if they meet a certain criteria. And that does include, you know, objective standards that can be put in place for that review. Next slide please. Senate Bill 330 also addresses streamlining. And the goal was to remove roadblocks to housing development. It also has, this one has many different parts. It includes prohibition of down zoning in a jurisdiction after a certain date when this law went into effect. So when you look at all the land that's available in your city, the amount of land available for residential development needs to be preserved over time. It can be shifted to different areas if you're doing kind of a comprehensive update to your land use or zoning. But the goal is to allow for the same amount or more residential potential moving forward. And then the second bill on here, Assembly Bill 686, is a big new law that affects the housing element this time that Clancy referred to earlier. This is the affirmatively furthering fair housing law. And there's a whole new section of the housing element to implement this law. There is a very large analysis of many different fair housing factors in the community that will be in your draft housing element. And then those factors will be used to inform, you know, the conclusions of that analysis will be used to inform the programs that are in the housing element. There will be programs related to addressing any fair housing issues that are identified. And then the factors will also be looked at together with the sites that are proposed in the housing element to see how the distribution of the sites works in terms of the, how these fair housing factors show up in your city. And I know that you have a fairly small city, so it may not, things may not vary that much across town in larger jurisdictions, that is more frequent. But we'll see what the analysis looks like as we get into that. So that's a new section. If any of you have been involved with housing elements before or have looked at the current one, this will be all brand new this time. Next slide please. So finally, another new law this year, Senate Bill 9, you probably all heard of this one. Allows in single family zones, so zones that allow one unit basically. Before this law went into effect, to have two primary units allowed. And the opportunity is also available to split the lot. This applies in a lot of places, but not in every situation. So there's a lot of details if you're wondering about that and you haven't learned about this law yet. It is specific to each jurisdiction and certain criteria. And this is something that housing element analysis hasn't gone very far with yet, but is potentially something that we could look at in the housing element for counting units. And I'm going to turn it back over to Clancy, thank you.
Thank you Amy. So that concludes our presentation. And I will just make a quick pitch before we get into questions. So next Tuesday, August 16th, same place, but me and some of my cohorts will be in person. We're doing a community workshop, all ages are welcome, bring the kids, bring whomever you want. We will have some Spanish interpretation available and there will be refreshments. So it's a much more interactive, fun type workshop, you know, kind of those classic, get to hear from the community. So you are all welcome and I encourage all of y'all to attend if you are able. So now is the time for questions. So I do not know the answer to that one, but the city staff might.
We have a housing here in Kingsburg over on Larry or Union Street where I had heard in one of our meetings where we were helping them get roadchar accessible in their home. We just suddenly thought we were having, remember that Alex, something like that?
Uh, I think there's, yeah, so there's some county programs, like the county home fund and some other things too that were eligible to participate in that will usually connect them under the umbrella too of our community development block grant funding. Not, not like, yeah, not necessarily a city fund, but we can usually connect them with some of those resources.
I have two questions. On slide 23, on SB 9, that allow two units per lot. It says for potential four units on a single family lot. Not four units per, okay. So it would be like a quad flex or like tiny homes or two, okay, two duplexes, got it? And then SB 330. And no subjective design standard. We already have standards in our city, does that mean that those are null and void?
Hi there again, no, it means that for projects that are eligible for streamlining under this law, similar to SB 35, then objective design standards must be used for those projects. But in general, the state housing law is going away from subjective design standards for housing. So that is a trend that we're seeing in state law.
Got a question?
Yeah, I just have one question from the planning department. And that is with the site inventory, the physical tool of site inventory can be very useful, I've found. It's pretty site specific in terms of graphics. When I worked in solving and you and I met when we were both, when I was over on the coast, the site inventory was really handy. You can look parcels up by, you know, by a Google map index and then it would tell you the zoning and then drill down exactly how dense that particular parcel could be in terms of housing. I don't know if they've done that, if they continue that, but it's pretty useful. So when somebody comes in with a project, you could refer right to the site inventory and get a clear snapshot of what the housing element had identified for that particular parcel. Just a little wish list thing, I know that you all probably could have followed the same formatting, no matter which city you're working with.
I will definitely note that down and hi Holly.
I have another question on slide 14. Our allocation, you said we're 882 at 2%. In our packet, it says 861 at 1%. Doesn't seem like a big deal, but in a small town, kind of a big deal.
Yeah, so apologies about that. So the COG re-released their numbers in June, so they initially came out with them earlier. And then they re-released them in June and it went up just of, yeah, that's why you're seeing that discrepancy. And Amy might have a little bit more drill down info, but that is why you're seeing that, yeah.
Yeah, we made some late changes to the PowerPoint, because I believe it was just last week or the week before, there was a final meeting where the final RENA numbers were worked out amongst the jurisdictions. And my understanding is that some of the numbers that the county was going to take went to other jurisdictions and it was a kind of a late decision. So that's, yeah, that's why there's a difference.
And this isn't 882 new ones, it still includes the ones that we currently have for low income or like our elderly, correct?
Sorry, what is your question?
This isn't 882 new allocations, we still get to count the ones we currently have. Like we already have a lot of senior housing.
No, so this is, this relates to new construction. So every housing element cycle, there's a new number that is the goal for trying to build new units, not, this doesn't include any existing housing that you have.
I have a quick question for you. On slide 15, it says suburban jurisdictions, 20 units per acre. I'm sorry, I had the 861, but the rough map that works out to like 43 acres, that would be dedicated to this project, this type of project?
I can answer that, so that's, that would I can answer that. So that's, that would be if if all sites in the city allowed that density, which is not not usually the case. So the twenty unit per acre threshold, again, it not again, but it applies to that lower income portion of the arena. This is a oh, threshold that the state says is okay to use when doing the math. But your other regional housing needs numbers for the moderate and above moderate categories would typically be found, you would find sites that are lower density to address those, not always, but that's fairly typical. So it could end up being actually more acreage than than if you just divide the eight hundred and something by by twenty. But I I would like to say that the previous question was about the actual housing stock, but like Clancy said, if you have sites that you already looked at in your previous housing element, you are likely to be able to use those again if you didn't, if they're not developed already. So it's not necessarily looking for all new sites to address this new regional housing needs number. Does that make sense?
I do have a question on the rezone timeframe. You had mentioned that that analysis had not been done yet. Do we have a schedule? Or an idea of when we might be doing that?
For the rezones that was that was
Right.
in this law?
Yeah, the one that was supposed to be done a hundred and twenty days within that deadline in twenty twenty three. Right? So it's eighty thirteen ninety by nineteen.
Yeah, so that's part of the analysis in the housing element that we're starting to work on.
Yeah, and the hundred and twenty days is for the city adopting that housing element. The city still has, I think, three years to rezone the land. So there's still, the city has a good bit of time. It's not hundred and twenty days, got to get a zoning change in because that's not going to happen.
Right, right, right. Well, yes, I see the dates in twenty twenty three. Okay.
So if we want to go back to the schedule slide, and the public review draft housing element, February, that's when we will have that analysis available and we'll know whether rezoning is needed. And the the staff will know earlier than that. And whoever gets to see the administrative draft.
And just one note. Of the eight hundred eighty two regional housing allocation, not all of those are, you know, they're not all low income or those things, like Amy was saying, the above moderate and moderate units can typically be zoned at a lower density, but up to twenty units per acre when trying to accommodate the needs for the those different income bands.
A question. Can we as a city have an ordinance to keep our local control and not let the state dictate these zoning laws and new zoning laws?
I don't know if there's a city attorney present, if they want to take that question. I'm happy to respond based on my knowledge of what's going on currently in state law, but that's somewhat of a a legal question.
Yeah, yeah, the city attorney's back here this evening. So if you want to take a shot at it, you can.
Yeah, so the way state law's been going, your local control has been getting less certain when it comes to certain housing projects. So what I've learned, you know, in planning, education and so forth, is that the the best approach is to update your local regulations so that when a project does come forward, it the standards that are in place that are the objective standards are what the community wants. So I I don't know where the city is at with that process, but that is one way to maintain, you know, your vision as projects come forward. But it's definitely, I'm not trying to downplay the issue. It's definitely something where the state has been taking more jurisdiction recently.
A good goal. Well, I mean, I think, I think that there are examples in the state of communities that have gone to battle with H C D.
I think mine is going to be nine.
Sure. So I think if you don't, I mean, that's state law, though, you know, I think there are some teams state law, we're not going to follow it. So I'll provide some examples of that and what they went through. I have some idea of what occurred, but I know just locally, a couple of years ago, I know Clovis was a compliance.
Yeah, the most and really most, some of the more serious consequences are that puts a stop to your grant application for state for for funding. Because the bottom seat check is, do you have a certified housing element? And if you can't say yes to that, that throws out your application for really a number of sources of revenue. So it cuts a little bit of a risk that way. I I do think that researching objectives, design standards wherever it's possible would be our our easiest way to to comply with everything that's being asked to follow, but get get the kind of results that we want.
Other questions?
I guess it's a very hypothetical type question. What if, what if developments and buildings just kind of stop in a town? Not just in Kingsbury, but in any town. If one of these towns just stops growing, stops building, economy takes a turn, how much are we going to be on the hook for these eight hundred and eighty two homes if we're not building any homes?
Yeah, so the city's responsibility in this is is the groundwork there? If a developer wanted to come in and build, you know, fifty homes, eight hundred homes, what have you in the city, the groundwork and the zoning is there. But, you know, it's not illegally by any requirement of the city, if the city does not build these eight hundred eighty two units in this timeframe, then all, you know, then it's going to go awry. It's just one of those, all right, so we adopted this housing element. We understand this is what the state is saying. You know, is the zoning in place? Is the code allowing for these units to get built should that private investment come in? Amy, do you have anything else on that one?
Nope, that's exactly right.
Yeah, so does that help out at all or make sense? Like, it's not, you know, this is not on the city to fund this. This is not on the city to build this. It's just for the city to lay the groundwork to make it available if folks wanted to come in.
So I mean, maybe there's maybe there's two different questions that are, so you're asking maybe if like the city says, hey, we're worried about water supply or something like that, at the coast, right? So we're worried about water supply, so we're going to limit growth from that perspective.
Yes.
I think that 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 might be more the the question that he answers that, you know, I was going to say the other side of that is the argument between cities and the state where we say the market drives these things, like why, you know, because everything is kind of getting pushed down to cities to have to figure out how housing is going to happen. And, you know, that's that's kind of the out of the last few years is that we don't build the housing, you know.
I'll just say if it's more of a resources type situation, then if at all possible, the state wants to see affordable projects prioritized for water, for example. So there are, you know, things like that that could be put in your housing element programs if there's a concern in that regard.
Looking at this, we all, we have we have a growth plan for our town where we have a certain amount of allocation annually that we give out. And I believe we only do thirty five multifamily housing allocations per year. Is that correct? Like, that's not even going to meet this where developers could need it if they wanted to come in.
Thirty five over annually.
Thirty five annually, but we're looking at
over an eight year period.
Eight hundred and eighty two housing allocations are expected over eight years.
Right, but that's divided up between very low and then there's a moderate and then there's above moderate. And, you know, so there's a pie split differently. And we probably could be what, you know, what that number would be. What we need to do is zone for it, remember. It's just, it's a, it's a very thorough mapping exercise in many ways. It takes a long time, a lot of analysis and stuff. But in the state, this is, this is where you can do this. If somebody comes in with the with the desire and the money and the plan. And if they don't, well, we've done our, we've done our our heart.
So, yeah, so we have a hundred and fifteen allocations a year. So split between low density and single family and residential or whole family, right? So if you do a hundred and fifteen over eight, that's nine hundred. That would cover that.
Yeah, it's definitely something that we'll take a look at. And it's called the constraints analysis piece of the housing element where we look at all your local regulations and make sure that they allow for this amount of housing. I I believe that's been, has that been in place since the last housing element was written? Yeah, so it was analyzed in your last housing element and we'll take a look at it this time, too.
It was, it was reviewed. So the other opportunity is for us as a community is to up is to there, we receive a direction from the consultants to as to what we need to add to our zoning ordinance to stay compliant. And there's language that is that is often recommended to to do that. And that's a good, that's also a good exercise for us to keep up to date with certain requirements. I think the last housing element they hit, we needed to do transitional supportive politics, for instance. We need to put a definition of what that meant and where that item could typically be zoned for. So that's, that is an opportunity for us to make sure that we're, we keep up to date with what state law.
Other questions, comments? We don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, and hope to see y'all on on August sixteenth.
All right. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is to return this workshop.